I'd like to call tonight's regular Des Moines City Council meeting to order for April 11th, 2019, and I would ask Councilmember Mahoney to please lead us in the pledge.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Councilmember Nutting is absent tonight, and he's notified us. Is there a motion to ...
Deluft.
Second.
A motion was made by Deputy Mayor Pennington, seconded by Councilmember Back. All those in favor, please raise your right hand and say aye.
Aye.
Aye. Passes six zero. I'd like to make a few comments tonight before we get into things. There's been a bit of activity and discussion over the past week. So, I did collect my thoughts, so I apologize, but I will be looking at notes. So last Thursday, the city council approved a contract amendment to the city manager's contract. This was the result of a comprehensive performance evaluation and review of comparable pay in other cities with whom Des Moines has to compete for executive talent. Hiring and maintaining the city manager, who is the chief executive officer of this city, is a legal and critical requirement and responsibility of the city council. The city manager's role is intertwined with the success or failure of our city. The city manager acts both directly and indirectly through others to manage the city and its resources. So evaluating Mr. Mathias' performance is inevitably linked to evaluating the city's performance as a whole. The council's annual performance evaluation of the city manager is also a key component of the council's oversight and government's responsibilities. The council conducted a city manager's annual performance on March 28th of 2019. Then we met the following week at a scheduled meeting at the Beach Park Dining Hall, and we did vote to approve the contract based on the exemplary result of the performance evaluation. This meeting was open to the public, and there were members of the community present. Additionally, the agenda was prepared and available to the public on the prior Friday, as is the process for every regular council meeting. I'm sorry, not every regular, every council meeting. We also recorded the meeting's audio, and it was made available on the city's website the following day. At that meeting, the council approved the city manager's contract by a seven-zero vote. Optics being what they are, the process is not and was not intended to exclude any visibility into any issue, and this matter was addressed in the manner that all meetings and agenda items consistently are. I'd also like to address the content of the city manager's contract. Prior to the city council selecting Mr. Mathias as the city manager in August of 2016, the market rate to bring outside, an outside city manager in was approximately $200,000. Now, it's important to note that this was two and a half years ago, and as we are all aware, in August of 2016, the city was on the verge of bankruptcy and not in the position to adequately compensate a city manager. Michael's unique dedication, I'm sorry, education and career make him an ideal fit for the city of Des Moines, and its future is divine, as defined by not only this council, but the community in which we serve. His education includes master's degrees from the University of Oxford, University of Cambridge, University of California, Santa Cruz, with specialties in sustainable urban development and applied economics. He is also, was honored to be selected as a Robert F. Kennedy Fellow for his work in low-income communities in Oakland, California. When he was selected for the city manager position, he accepted an offer of an annual salary of $153,000, as this was the prior city manager's salary, and the prior city manager had not received a step increase for a number of years, but Michael accepted it anyway. This was below the average of, for comparable cities, and it was also $47,000 less than what the council had anticipated spending on the other candidate. Mr. Mathias accepted this because of his love and dedication for the city. He had been serving as our assistant city manager. At the time Mr. Mathias took over the city manager, we were looking at being one year away from becoming a failing municipal government, with the prospect of becoming part of Kent, Burien, Sea-Tac, or Federal Way, or some other jurisdiction. Thankfully, all of that's changed. Mr. Mathias has taken over the reins of our government, and the city has avoided bankruptcy and has established a sound, solvent, sustainable budget, implemented excellent financial management practices, and received significant bond rating upgrades, and he, this will save the city millions. I also want to address how we, the process, a little bit. As part of our evaluation of the city manager's performance, the city council requested a city manager, city manager salary data for other cities that are, have a similar size and in our region. We learned that our city salary range for the city manager position was on the low side of compensation. We also discovered that a number of our amazing executive staff, many who Mr. Mathias promoted or attracted to the city, took pay cuts to come here because they wanted to be part of what we were doing here and our government. The council also recognizes how important it is to retain excellent staff and not have them leave the city because we can't compensate them appropriately. The recent contract that we offered to Mr. Mathias addresses the inequity recognized by reviewing other competitive industry and city salary structures, as well as Mr. Mathias' success in maintaining his primary responsibility for ensuring that our city government, as directed by the policies and budgetary decisions of this council, continues to function and deliver at its current high level. With this contract, he is now in line with those jurisdictions that we have to compete with. The council's vision for the future of Des Moines requires a great deal of leadership, and it's imperative that we don't lose our momentum due to an unwillingness to pay market rates. There's no doubt that this council clearly understands that Michael could earn more money in the private sector or with a different municipality, but he's chosen us. Additionally, the council's expectations for this year and beyond continue to be extremely high. So I, this is the last time that I will make a comment on this, but I want to be clear. These are the factors that rendered into our decision. I want to open it up to my fellow councilmembers in Kew, wow, my seeing hands. Okay, I'm going to start with Councilmember Banks, and then go to Councilmember Back.
Well, first, I'd like to say, Mayor, thank you. Secondly, I'd like to say that it's, your comments, and I can only speak for me, but I'm going to look across the dais and imagine that all of us are on, in line with exactly what you've said. No one knows what goes on in the city when you're outside the city. When I say outside, I mean, we're all residents. But until you get behind the scenes, you have absolutely no idea how difficult it can be to make sure things run well. We are not, we are not the day-to-day people. We don't run the city. The city manager runs the city. And I have to say, looking across at other cities in King County, we're doing a dead-gum good job, because some of these other cities, all of us have gone, how in the world can they possibly keep their citizens and their economic development going? And we don't have that issue here. When I first came on, the first thing I thought was, oh, great, this is going to be a great, great thing to do. And then I found out exactly what I was getting into afterwards, but it didn't deter me. I don't think it's deterred any of us. I mean, many, I can only speak for Vic and Jeremy and Matt and I, it's been tough. There's been nothing easy about this position. And nobody here, I think we've been accused of making, giving ourselves raises when I first came on, and I thought, wouldn't that be wonderful if we could get a raise? We're not doing this for the money. We're doing this for the city. We're doing it because we live in this city. And I believe we appreciate, and now people are understanding how much we appreciate this city. So, thank you. Your words reflect exactly how I feel.
Thank you. Councilmember Back.
Thank you, Mayor, for what you shared, and Louise, your point was right on as well. I want to remind everybody that in January 2016, the previous city manager announced that he was going to retire, and we did a nationwide search. We hired a headhunting recruiting firm. We did a nationwide search to find, to try to find a replacement. And initially, they came up with about two dozen names from 18 different states, narrowed it down to about 12. We looked at those resumes. We got it down to four from four different states and interviewed them all, and then Michael was the only one in-house. And when you look at the credentials that's required for this job, this is not an easy job. I saw some of the remarks that was made, and it made me laugh. Somebody said that they could do Michael's job in just two days a week, easily, and I'd like to know where that person's resume was when we were hiring, because maybe we could have saved some money. But when you would have seen the resumes of the people that applied for this job, this is a very difficult position that he's got. And I have watched Michael, the last three and a half years, be an excellent choice-maker when it comes to people. The staff that he's got with Tim, with Scott, with our new chief, with Beth Ann, with Susan, Dan Brewer, I mean, we've got some incredible people that work in this city, not to mention our aviation advisory committee. He has got the smartest people. I've only sat in a couple of those meetings. He's got some really smart people. And I'm thinking back to the 1990s, when we were part of this big fight against the third runway, and all the cities around the airport threw in, it was rumored to be around 28 million, it sounds like it's closer to $33 million, and what did we get? A third runway. And from what I hear, that city manager back in those days was getting way more than what Michael is now. I asked Tim to confirm that, but we are in excellent shape right now as a city, better than we've ever been before. I've been watching the city since 1980. We are in excellent shape because Michael's at the helm. And all we can do is evaluate him and decide if he's worthy of a pay raise or not. And this evaluation process, it was very comprehensive. It took me about an hour and, hour and 45 minutes to fill that thing out. And when we were looking at each other's responses in executive session, week and a half ago, I think I was probably the most critical, and there is, you know, anywhere from poor to excellent, and there was a number of cases where I just kind of gave him a middle grade because I didn't have enough information that I wanted to judge him too harshly. But I think out of everybody, I was probably the most critiquing of all of us. But when it came to his pay raise, when I think about what other cities are paying, there is no doubt that he is well worth what we are paying him. And I'll share one thing, it made me laugh. A fellow councilmember who was here back in the 90s, he was talking about the current Seahawk situation, Russell Wilson, we might lose our quarterback, and somebody else might get him. They might be willing to pay him more, and it made me think of Michael, because I'm sure he gets headhunters, sending him notices that there's other cities that would like to interview him if he would like to go somewhere else. And I'm glad that he's not entertaining that at this time. But Russell Wilson is often compared to the late, or the famous Fran Tarkington, and Fran Tarkington was known to be a great scrambler, and Russell Wilson keeps getting compared to Fran Tarkington for being such a great scrambler. So I remember this interview when the old Howard Cosell interviewed Fran Tarkington and said, Fran, what makes you such a great scrambler? And he says, because I've got a terrible offensive line, that's what makes me scramble. And, Michael, this council is your offensive line. We're going to defend you, and we're going to protect you, so you don't have to scramble. You are doing an excellent job. We don't want you to have to run and find out how to do things the best. Not sure, not sure if the council's got your back. We got your back. And this council has got solidarity in decision behind you and what you're worth, and I want you to rest assured in that, and you just keep doing what you're doing.
Back's got his back.
Yeah, Rob Back's got your back, too.
Yeah.
That's all I got.
Good job.
By the way, but you, but you're no Fran Tarkington.
Is there anyone else who'd like to make a comment?
I'm holding mine till the committee reports. It's kind of included in it.
Okay. Deputy Mayor Pennington?
Yeah, my fellow councilmembers have said just about everything, but I would remind folks that where we've come from, where we came from in a pretty short period of time. And, and I, and I know the nights that, that we had late-night meetings with the mayor and the city manager, and then we would work with our councilmembers, work with other elected officials from other agencies, and the city is so much farther ahead. And you're going to hear some, you're going to hear tonight from the police chief and about just the security in our city, and, and the security for our citizens, and the good that's gone on there. And as we went out during, well, I didn't, I, I had an event and couldn't make it out for some of that, but as I, as I did that towards the latter part, and, and as I would get emails from folks, the, the messages, it was, their concern was that we have a sustainable city, that our city not be divided up amongst other cities, that we not unincorporate, that we have a solid police department, that we have a parks and recreation and senior services program that is solid, that we start paving roads, that quality-of-life programs were, were in place. And, and all of that comes with a cost. And, you know, we're probably a $100-million corporation, and then if you want to add the assets, you know, we're, I don't know what it would be, but I would guess, you know, that again. And, and to manage that, and to see the growth, if you look at, at, at your property values, and you look at the growth, and you look at the commercial growth, and, and you look at the folks that are wanting to come into the city, we've come a long ways in a pretty short order. And every councilmember up here, every staff member, has got investment into managing your assets, because they belong to you. They're your assets. Everything in this city, your houses, the, the police cars, the, the dump truck, you name it, everything, it's, they're your assets, and it's our responsibility to ensure that we take care of them. That's part of what we swore to do. That's part of what we committed to do when we decided to get into public service, into elected offices, was to take care of you, every one of you, and your investment. And the best, we, we committed to hiring the best people, and Michael was able to bring incredible people here to work for him. We are in envy of a lot of other city employees from other cities, from other electeds, because of what we're able to do. And because of your engagement in the community as well, your engagement in your local government, that's huge. That's huge. As I look out here, there's a lot of you that are engaged at a lot of different levels, and we'll hear some more of that tonight. A lot of what we, we have accomplished, what Michael's been able to lead, happens because of your engagement, because of our engagement and our support. And believe me, this journey over the last, from, from July, or from January of 2016 to date, has come at a high price for some and higher for others. And I will not, I will not have anybody tip over and experience what I experienced. And I will protect this city, your investment, our employees, and my fellow councilmembers till my last breath comes again, and that's just the way it is.
Councilmember Buxton?
Thank you, Mayor. I'll segue with my colleague in appreciating you for your passion for the community. That's why you're here tonight on a Thursday night. You could be doing something else. So, thank you for coming. Thank you for your passion to want to see things be right and well in your community. And I have to agree with everything my colleagues said, and many of you who are here are here because you read on Facebook, so most of you know how I feel already. I waxed long a few times on Facebook. So, I support my decision. I still stand by it with, in solidarity with my colleagues, and, but we do appreciate hearing how you feel. So, thank you for coming here tonight. Thank you.
Okay. At this time, I will turn this over to our city manager to give his administration report.
Thank you, Mayor. First, we're going to have Chief Thomas come up, and, there he is, just give us an update on a couple of different issues related to law enforcement.
Look at that cool logo. That is cool.
Thank you. This evening, I'm going to give some updates on what's currently going on in the police department, but it is really important, before I get going into the slides, that I note that we're going to talk specifically about some police issues tonight, but it is about the teamwork, and, and we've heard a little bit tonight already from the city council, but, on the teamwork, but I can tell you without a doubt, I'm extremely proud of what I'm about to talk about, and there's absolutely no way that it could have been accomplished without the support of the city manager and the team. This is a team effort with, with Tim, and Dan, and Susan, and Beth Ann. If we didn't have the team to do some of about what I'm going to describe, there's no way that it could have happened. So, of course, I don't want to leave out Scott in the marina, but because of that, we were able to make this happen. So, go on to the next. Or do I have it?
You do, but I can use.
All right, I got it. Redondo Substation. We, today, the sign is up at the Redondo Substation. We do have a Des Moines Police Substation there, and it's partnerships, not only partnerships with our city staff to make this happen, the investment of the city of Des Moines to make this happen, but that substation will be, it's partially done. The front part will be for uniform staff, for our patrol officers, so we can have a better presence at the south end of town, but also working out of that substation will be the Bureau of Alcohol, Tobacco, and Firearms Violent Crime Task Force, the U.S. Marshal Service, the King County Sheriff's Office Gang Unit will be out of there. And just this morning, I had a meeting with the special agent in charge of the FBI. They are interested in putting two FBI agents to be part of this task force at the substation. Ray Duda, the special agent in charge of the FBI, will be meeting on Tuesday with our new United States Attorney, who's in charge of the Western District of Washington. And the U.S. Attorney's focus is on dealing with violent crime in the Western District of Washington. And in the city of Des Moines, out of our substation will be the epicenter of where that work is going to be done. It's very exciting. I can tell you that our city put in a lot of money to help make sure that we have that presence, and now with the partnerships, the U.S. Marshal Service is going to put in about $30,000 to $50,000 worth of resources to help make that happen. The ATF is providing the security, the Wi-Fi, the connectivity to help make all this happen. So with that great partnership, the Sheriff's Office, other local agencies in the area, this truly is a national model, and I'm really excited about how much safer that is going to make our community. I've mentioned before, now we have six detectives, so if there's a violent major crime in our community, we have six detectives that can help work that case. Now, once this substation gets fully operational, we're going to have 26 federal and local agencies to help deal with any crime or violence issues in our community. So it's a huge resource multiplier for keeping our community safe. Here's a picture of the sign from just this morning. It just got put up this morning, but I wanted to show you. It looks pretty sharp. The next thing is our street crimes unit. So our street crimes unit that was approved by the city manager and the council, we've gone this direction of street crimes. They've been in operation one week. We've already been involved in the arrest of a homicide suspect. The homicide was committed in Snohomish County. We were part of the arrest team that arrested the suspect down in Pierce County. A robbery suspect who was at large, we tracked him down and found him in Federal Way and took him into custody. And we were part of a team that arrested a suspect on a federal probation violation, did a follow-up search warrant on his residence and his vehicle in South Seattle, and recovered in that black bag that you see are nine pounds of heroin. There's four pounds of marijuana and several, a large amount of methamphetamine, and our guys were right in the middle of that operation. Right now, today, that, our team, our street crimes team and the sergeant are down in Redondo. It's spring break, so they're down in Redondo, providing an extra presence and ensuring that things stay calm and under control. We're not going to wait for there to be problems and then go down and deal with them. We're going to proactively get down there and deal with any potential issues in our community. Our street crimes team has also been involved in, they've towed several vehicles, and they're dealing with those nuisance problems in our neighborhoods to try to keep our community clean and safe and ensure a high quality of life. Doing a wonderful job. They're off to a great start. And then the last thing I want to talk about is our crime stats for the first quarter of the year. The first part, though, before I get into there and kind of describe that, is I want to tell you that the Des Moines Police Department is fully staffed. I think this is the first time in a long time that anybody can say that our police department is at full staffing. Not only is our department at full staffing, we have two officers hired as part of our Hire Ahead program. So we have two over what is authorized as core staffing for the police department. I was at a meeting at the Police Academy this morning. I can tell you, if we were to hire an officer today, the soonest they could get into the Police Academy is August 29th, and the vast majority of police departments in our county are very understaffed, and there was a lot of concern expressed on how long it's going to take to get people into the Police Academy. We are, as far as I'm aware, the only agency that I'm aware of that's not only fully staffed, but two ahead. So we are in great shape. I went to our civil service meeting yesterday, and in speaking with Tara, who's doing our civil service, she said she is being called every single day by lateral police officers asking if we have any openings yet. So we've got a really, really good thing going because of the support that we have from the city in the police department. And you can see, we look at first-quarter crime stats and data, in every category, we're down this year compared to we, where we were for the first quarter of last year. We're down 10 thefts, our assaults are down, our robberies are way down, our sex offenses... We're down ten thefts, our assaults are down, our robberies are way down, our sex offenses are down, and then the overall calls for service in crimes are down. So, I believe that our policing strategy and how we're addressing crime and working with the city is showing dividends and it's being successful. So, that's all I have unless you have any questions of me.
Councilmember Banks.
I do. Chief, just I recall, I can't remember how long ago, but we talked about the academy situation. I'm not sure if it was with you or if it was prior chief. With the opportunity perhaps of having a second academy, and I thought Highline was interested in helping us with that. Do you recall that, Michael?
I remember there being talk in the legislature about possibly enhancing. I think that that has happened to some degree, but I don't think they're gonna go to a second.
Oh, they're not. Okay.
There was a conversation.
I thought so. All right. Thank you. You're doing a great job.
Councilmember Beck.
Thanks, Chief. Can you remind me again, how many patrols do we actually have? Is it five with four officers and one sergeant?
Yes, that's what we currently have assigned to each shift. And then we have two street crimes officers and a officer assigned to the ATF Violent Crime Task Force, and then our six detectives.
And that's the first time we've been fully staffed to have all these patrols totally covered for years, as far as I know.
That's correct.
How are we doing as far as succession planning? Are there any retirements in the hopper that we're gonna have to start replacing some folks that are on their way out?
Well, those are the two hire-heads that we talked about. And initially, the city and the council authorized for hire-heads because it looked like we were going to have several retirements and several people were eligible to leave. As we've continued to work through this and talked with our staff, we don't have that many people, maybe one that we know of, that may be interested in retiring. So, I didn't feel it was responsible to hire ahead four people when there wasn't the belief that we were gonna lose people. Now, sometimes you never know because of injuries or other issues where we might lose staffing. So, to have two hire-heads ready to go, I felt was responsible, a good middle ground. But four, I felt was too many for what we had. And any less than two probably wouldn't be responsible.
Great report. Thanks for keeping us safe.
Mayor, if I may, a couple of things. You know, couldn't be more pleased with the performance of the police department, leadership of Chief Thomas. For everyone to know, he's president of the Washington Association of Sheriffs and Police Chiefs, WASPIC. He's done an amazing job. The couple of things is that we are providing incentives for laterals and also for the prior-to-academy officers that come on board. Succession planning is a critical component, which we've all been through in this discussion with the council over the past number of years. And I think that one of the things that's attracting people is the chief's leadership. The second thing is his ability, and as we work together, to create opportunities in both detectives, through the Violent Crimes Task Force, through other opportunities, to create some churn and some options for officers to do more than just stay in a patrol on the street for twenty years, but to actually have opportunities. And that's been a critical piece of what you've done. And obviously, the results speak for themselves. Thank you.
Thank you. The one more piece, when you mentioned that about the partnerships and opportunities, we had been exploring partnering with Normandy Park, a group, a boat builder company was willing to donate, what started was donate a boat for us to have a harbor patrol. Then it turned into, it was gonna cost ten thousand dollars, and then it turned into it was gonna cost forty thousand dollars. But because of our partnerships and being willing to provide part of our workspace for the sheriff's office, I met with the sheriff just this week, and the King County Sheriff's Office is going to donate a boat to our police department free of charge so we can create a harbor patrol in our marina. And it's not gonna cost us anything up front. And with our staffing, as long as we're out doing safety checks and doing enforcement, they will, we are eligible to get voter registration money back. So, we feel we can run this program on an overtime basis and it'll pay for itself, costing the city no money but out of those voter registrations. So, again, partnerships to build what we have to be very effective. So, we're really happy about that.
And Chief, I've got a couple other hands up here. I'm sorry, keep your standing. So, I'll start with Deputy Mayor Pennington, then Councilmember Beck.
And I hate saying this, but boy, I'm proud of you.
It's good coming from a fireman.
Let the record show that Deputy Mayor Pennington did say he was proud of our law enforcement at the risk of offending his firefighter brothers.
That's right. No, I, but I truly am proud of you and your stewardship of the police department. I'm proud of our entire force, you know, and to really, to see the changes that have come about in the last little bit of time is really remarkable. And, you know, we had such a small group working their, you know, their hearts out. And you've got just an incredible team there. And it's gratifying to really be able to be a part of this leadership team that has been able to enhance the safety of the city and really enhance the police department because they have needed that for so long and they have worked so hard to hold that line. And so, I'm proud of you and your leadership and each one of your officers. You know, it's incredible work and it's, thank you for really getting this back under control and going down a good path. It's pretty incredible work. Thank you.
Thank you. Councilmember Beck.
I forgot to ask, what about the newest member of our force, our K-9? What's the status of our new dog?
Yeah, so our new dog is being trained down in Pierce County. He's doing a great job with Officer Mike Bamer, and he will be done with his training and go for certification at the end of this month. So, if you happen to be available, April seventeenth, next Wednesday at seven o'clock at Highline College, we're having a police community meeting, and the K-9 will be a part of that meeting. So, you're welcome to attend.
That's, I'm sorry, that's April twelfth at seven, is that seven P.M.?
April seventeenth.
April seventeenth.
At seven P.M.
Seven P.M., Highline College. Do we know the building?
It's the round one in the middle.
Yeah.
The round one in the middle. I'll put that down.
I didn't wanna say that, but thank you.
Okay.
All right.
Pretty good. I would just like to say, this is where we knew we could be, but we needed the right leader to get us there, and you're the person. Thank you.
Thank you. Thanks, Chief. Now, Susan, if you'd just speak briefly about Vision 2050.
Yes, thank you. As many of you know, the Puget Sound Regional Council is our regional planning agency, and they're currently embarking on an update to the growth plan for our region. That's called Vision 2040, and the new plan will be Vision 2050. The comment period is currently open on the supplemental environmental impact statement. And we have been, the staff have been reviewing that material. We previously commented as well on the scoping for this environmental review. And because we are a little short of council meetings, what the processes that we will follow for the comments, we'll have a draft letter to you in about a week or a week and a couple of days to send out to the council for comments. And we'll ask you to review it within a few days and send comments back just directly to the staff, not to each other, so that we don't have an issue with, you know, open public meetings. And the staff will consolidate that into a final letter for signature and submittal to Puget Sound Regional Council. I'll also mention that anyone is also avail, may comment on this document, so for the public. If you look up Puget Sound Regional Council, Vision 2050, there's an online comment form, an address, and you can, you can comment through that methodology.
And I'd like to add also, thank you, Susan, that Councilmember Buxton is a member of the Growth Management Policy Committee, so this will be helpful to her in terms of having positions from the city. So, we anticipate not having a formal meeting that we can actually adopt policies. By getting your input, we will incorporate them, and then you will be armed with what you need for those meetings and we may also comment on the supplemental EIS. Thank you, Susan. Now, it's my great pleasure to introduce the original bootlegger. No, we're gonna have a presentation by Steve Edmiston, and we appreciate the time. I know that Sheila Brush is also here. I see Doreen and others have been involved with the effort to address the impacts of Sea-Tac Airport. And we've been fortunate to have Sheila and Steve on our Aviation Advisor Committee. We engage with them through the START Committee at the airport and through other ways. And, you know, there's, it kinda takes, takes like a, I don't know what you would call it, but it takes a cooperative effort between the government and the efforts in the private sector and to address what's going on. So, Steve is speaking on behalf of Quiet Skies tonight and tell us about an exciting event. So.
Thank you. So, actually, I'll be speaking on behalf of tonight, this new organization called the League of Quiet Skies Voters, which is, when I say new, I mean new, formed in, as an association this year in 2019 with this mission to empower voters that live in the shadow of the eighth busiest airport in the United States. That's us. That's where we live. With information about aviation impacts to human health and the environment so that our voices, so that your voices can be heard. That's the mission. The origin, the idea behind the League of Quiet Skies Voters is there's a lot of groups, and there's a lot more groups than this, but Quiet Skies Puget Sound, Quiet Skies Coalition out of Burien, Federal Way Airplane Health and Noise Alliance, this thing called the Briefing Project, all kinda have their own thing. And that's a good thing, that everybody has their own thing. Sometimes it's even, they have a special issue. But I think the realization over the last two years has been, we have far more in common in these organizations in terms of the things we're gonna deal with in terms of aviation expansion. And how do you ratchet up the influence that we can have if we have, you know, half a million citizens living in sort of the South King County cities? How do we ratchet up the attention that we have as a stakeholder on these issues? So, the League of Quiet Skies Voters is an association of these organizations. And if I come back in a couple of months, I'm kind of hopeful that there's a lot more logos up there, of folks that have jumped in to the league to support this initiative. And you'll also see some local media, the blogs, the B-Town Blog, South King Media, Waterland Blog. They're not formal like founders or sponsors, but I just wanna call them out because they've been very good about treating us as news. You know, that these issues are news for our community and making sure we get coverage when we do these events. So, we've been very, very pleased and thankful that we get that coverage. So, what is the premise of this? The premise is preserving and improving quality of life. Protecting public health and the environment is a value that should be paramount. And then I put in quotes, first do no harm. First do no harm in aviation expansion should not be a point of debate. How is that even possible that that's a point of debate? And yet it is. It should be a foundation for every stakeholder, not just citizens, but for airlines and the airport, the FAA. We also embrace the phrase quality of life. And if you really drill into this stuff, you'll find that people are not embracing that phrase. They like to ignore it and kinda say, well, we don't really know what it means. We embrace quality of life. Quality of life matters and is a term that we understand and embrace. It includes our human health, it includes our environment, it includes our property values, it includes our public safety and our social, economic, and environmental justice as that is impacted by the airport expansions. Important, this new league is nonpartisan, will not support or oppose a candidate or a party. We will work to provide reliable information that allows voters to make informed decisions about which candidates will actually best meet their needs and expectations. So, if you have a feel that maybe port candidates have not been doing that for you, the idea is to give you the tools to figure out, you know, how to respond to that effectively. And this is where I think it gets interesting, elevate. In this election cycle in 2019, just to give you an example, there are two Port of Seattle of the five, two of the five seats will be up. And those seats are up in this election cycle at the same time where the Port of Seattle is actively moving forward with its expansion plans. And we think the need for elevating aviation expansion right now to a frontline issue, preferably the most important issue for those Port of Seattle seat elections, is a critical thing for us to try to do. So, what do we wanna do? First call to action here is, we are holding a town hall on April twenty-fifth at the Highline Performing Arts Center in Burien, six to eight P.M. Keynote, we've got actually our representative, Adam Smith, to come in. This is important because he has become, you know, sort of certainly in the last two years, a tremendous advocate at the federal legislative level for issues that we are dealing with. So, we're not getting, we're not getting silence out there. We have an advocate. And you may have heard him talk about it in the context of, you know, Adam Smith Town Halls, where he's a little bit here, a little bit there. This is just Adam Smith on aviation, which I don't think any of us have ever heard that sort of thirty minutes. Like, what is he, what has he got to say? It's great. The air noise application, air noise I/O creator is gonna speak, Chris McCann. That little button, everybody, if you've heard about that, where you can record your complaints about airplanes out of Silicon Valley, Chris McCann invented that. He'll be participating. We're very excited to have a special report on the World Health Organization's 2018 Environmental Noise Guidelines, which are a seismic shift in our knowledge of science about the damage that noise does to us. Seismic. And so, we'll report on that. And we'll have an overarching, if all you know about this issue is, that plane's loud. If that's all you know, we want you to come to this because we'll give you twenty minutes in an Aviation Noise 101 to let you know everything else you need to know so you can be an informed voter. So, this is important. Three points, free, free, free. Get a lot of like, people are like, do I need a ticket? Do I need a ticket? We would love you to get a ticket. Go to our website, but it's free to get that ticket. It's an Eventbrite. It allows us to track headcount. That's all we're doing. So, we would love you to go to the website and get a ticket. And then why attend? Especially if you, I know about this stuff. I've been hearing about this stuff. I know. The numbers matter. You know, how many of us show up for this town hall with a sitting federal congressman is going to be very important in terms of the degree to which we get paid attention to. The numbers of people that go matters. So, bring your friends, bring your relatives, bring your visitors, you know, sneak in it, whoever you want. We wanna fill that place. Your knowledge will matter. Your knowledge to sort of sift through the things that may or may not be wholly true will matter. Accountability matters. We need to figure out how to hold our electeds accountable for the things they tell us but then don't do, things like that. Or candidates who aren't elected yet tell us they'll do, but they haven't, then they don't do. We also have candidate forums that we're scheduling down the road this year, so we'll actually get the candidates in for some Q and A. And the last point I wanna make is to say a thank you to the city of Des Moines and to our city manager. One of the things about this, this ended up being, this April twenty-fifth event, ended up being a conflict with respect to a city council meeting. And I really appreciate, and I think you took the leadership, Michael, on this, City Manager Mathias, a little too informal, to sort of circulate through the council. And that meeting, if I understand correctly, has been canceled so that everyone, and all of you who would normally be here can go there. And that's what we want. And all of you hopefully are able to go there and attend this. So, I wanna say thanks to the city for supporting this initiative in this matter. Thank you.
Well, I would like to say that the conflict was very frustrating for all of us. And my role is always to look at the agenda with Michael and the team and see what, you know, what's, what there is. The good news is that that agenda was light enough that it, nothing had to be done that night. We view this issue as very important. I appreciate your position about encouraging everybody to be there. We need the numbers. The public has to come out. Your voice has to be heard. And so, feeling that it was, and agreeing that it was critically important, especially, I mean, the work you guys do is really amazing. And it really has put Des Moines in the forefront of, you know, working with these other organizations. So, you know, Steve, Sheila, you know, I really, really appreciate it. So, you know, Steve, Sheila, you know, I really, really appreciate it, and it's my pleasure. I will be there. I have to go out here and get a ticket, I didn't understand that before.
But it's free.
But, well, free's good, free's good, everybody loves free.
And I suspect this strongly, no one would be turned away.
Well, okay.
Okay, so he forgot the ticket.
But, but you only have so many seats, so you've gotta, you know, and we need to keep, and we, and we need to keep fire codes, you know, in, in order. So I, I have a couple of the council members, Councilmember Back.
Steve, just for educational purposes, for those watching this broadcast, can you kind of summarize the way the Port of Seattle Commissioners have responded to this phrase "quality of life" when we bring up that important issue? How, can, can you summarize that in a few minutes or less?
That is a really loaded question.
People, I think, people need to hear that, in your phrase.
I'll give you two, I'll give you two very specific examples, and if you could tuck this away in the back of your mind to just see the challenges that we face. So for, I don't know if it's been for 100 years, but for decades, the actual bylaws of the Port of Seattle, the actual bylaws, you know, sort of the mission statement, number one, first section, created an interdependence between quality of life and the mission of economic growth. And in January of 2018, Port of Seattle deleted quality of life from its mission statement, just took it out, okay? Then later in that spring, there was legislation coming down the pike to form a, an aviation impact study that was sponsored by Representative Orwall. And while the Port of Seattle said they were neutral on this particular bill, what we were able to discover is that neutrality was actually not as neutral as you and I might think of that phrase, because their lobbyists came in and took the phrase "quality of life" out of the bill. So the idea, the port seems to be bent on removing any, is sort of deleting our quality of life from anything it needs to do going forward, which I think is just kind of a horrible thing. We should all be really shocked by it. I'm shocked by it. I, I just, I don't understand the optics of that, it's just a terrible thing to do. But that's kind of the challenge that we face right now, is that's the mindset. Yeah. Does that answer your question?
That statement should wanna get people very involved. Thank you, Steve.
Any other questions? Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you, Steve. Mayor, that concludes our admin report.
Council, we're running a little bit different than the normal format. I'm gonna go to, I'm gonna look for correspondence, and then we often have comments from the public well before now, so I'm gonna bring that up. Following that, that will take us to a public hearing, because we do have consultants here tonight, and then, then we'll go to board and committee reports, if that's okay with everybody. Thank you very much. Is there any correspondence?
No, Mayor.
Okay. This'll take us to comments from the public. We have had a couple folks sign up. When I call your name, please come to the podium, state your name and the city in which you live, you'll have three minutes to speak. The first person I have signed up to speak is Mr. Pat Nardo.
Good evening, Mr., Mr. Mayor, City Council, and my friends and neighbors in Des Moines. I came here tonight expecting to wade my way through a whole bunch of protesters and hellraisers, and I don't see any, and there's no campaign signs or anything against what's just been passed by the council. So I made a little write-up here. A worthy employee is rewarded with compensation for a job well done, more for exceedingly well-done. We as citizens of Des Moines thank you for towing us out of a $2 million hole and bringing, bringing us to a new worth of $100 million. Now, I'm speaking out of ignorance, because I don't know all of the things that you guys do, but I am especially appreciative, Michael, for what you have done for the city, and I'm especially thankful for, and I'm so proud, I voted for every single one of you, for your judgment, and that's all I had to say for this evening. Thank you. I have to leave, because I can't leave my wife alone too long. Good night, everybody.
Thank you very much. Our next signed up speaker is Mr. J.C. Harris.
My comment came about as, as a result of the mayor's four-page response to the salary increase for the city manager. And I was struck by the length of that, basically a feature list of the city manager's accomplishments, and that's, that's a pretty long list of accomplishments by, you know, I mean, even for, you know, any resume. And I was struck that in every category, the mayor felt it important to highlight the level of increased community engagement. And I can't comment on any of the other improvements to the city, I am sure they are all very well-deserved. However, an increase in community engagement, I cannot agree with. That has been a problem with the culture of this city government since I have lived here. It continues to be a problem. Our residents are extremely poorly informed as to how this city does what it does, what it does, and it's just, yeah. So to be surprised when residents are outraged, even if it's, if it's out of ignorance, you really cannot blame them for being upset, 'cause they don't know what's going on. You just don't tell people what's going on, and then you write these long letters, you know, and it happens all the time whenever there's anything controversial. There are always these emergency responses that are defensive and upsetting, and it's because people don't know what's happening. Specifically, the aviation committee, airport committee, has had basically zero work product in the last year. The individuals that I know of, Sheila and Steve, have done stellar work. It speaks for itself, but unlike the police chief who has statistics, hard evidence, where you can say, you know, these crimes are going down and so forth, there are no stats for the airport committee where you can say, this is being done, this is being done, and because there has nothing Des Moines-specific having been done. And I object to that, and I wish you guys would take up some Des Moines-specific airport issues in the coming year.
Thank you.
Thank you.
That's the last person we have signed up to speak. Do we have, I see someone from the audience that would like the opportunity to speak. Please state your name and the city in which you live.
Hi, my name is Sheila Brush. I live here in the city of Des Moines, and I'm just gonna provide a few extra details that our friend Steve left out that I think are really vital. A couple weeks ago, the city of Phoenix had a similar town hall. They had over 400 residents. The city of Phoenix has also won a lawsuit against the FAA for changing some flight paths. We're noticing the flight paths, I really am noticing them in the marina. You guys are getting hammered with turning outlaw over you. But, so there is victories, this is not something that we're, we shouldn't be defeated. This is a different time. So they had over 400 people show up, and it's meaningful. Currently, between 2012 and 2018, for people that don't know, Sea-Tac has had a 48% increase in operations, and this has happened without any type of mitigation plans, any type of environmental impact studies. They've been allowed to do this through a piecemeal process. But now we're looking at the next expansion under the SAMP, which if the port has its way, they will be the same size in operations, not in blueprint, not in footprint, but in operations, as Dallas-Fort Worth. Dallas-Fort Worth has seven runways and is a airport bigger than the island of Manhattan, yet the Port of Seattle wants to increase to have the same operations, and the only way they're gonna achieve that is through frequency. So what you're seeing on really busy days, when you see flights, I call them like a scene from Deliverance, when you're seeing those dueling banjos of arrival, it's not gonna be just once in a while, it's gonna be all the time, and it is, it is, it is very scary. When you think that the Sea-Tac, when you think that the airport now, it is on 2,500 acres. If the city of Sea-Tac went to the governor, went to the state, went to the FAA and said, hey, we have 2,500 acres right in the middle of our city, it's land, we wanna put in the eighth busiest airport. It would never happen, because it's reckless and it's danger, it's dangerous, and there's danger in environmental impacts, there's danger to our health. If they were to have smokestacks where the city of Sea-Tac is, it would be shut down, 'cause Sea-Tac Airport is currently the biggest greenhouse contributor in the state of Washington. And the last thing I wanna bring up is that there's been, I've reached out to a lot of different cities, because I'm the founder of Quiet Skies Puget Sound, which is a national group, and I work very closely with Congressman Smith's office, and some of the advice I've got, some of the really sage advice is that in the beginning, the cities would say, well, you need to contact the airport, and that makes complete sense, that's where the, the complaints would go. But I really urge the staff to attend this, even if you don't live here, you're gonna deal with the burden of upset citizens, 'cause they're not gonna know to immediately go to the airport to complain, they're gonna start complaining on you, and it's gonna be intolerable. And so I just really urge you to come to the town hall so that you can get a very quick, well, it won't be quick, but you can really get brought up to date, because we really need to recognize this, whether you live here or not, it is going to affect your day-to-day, because day-to-day people, especially say down at the marina visiting, what is going on with these planes? And so it, and also we need to come together as a full community and really engage on this. Thank you.
Thank you.
Let me, I just did one comment, Sheila. We will, you know, obviously, council is aware of this, and a number of them, or hopefully everyone will attend, but we will do the same with senior staff and staff affected by this in terms of attending if they're able to do so. So thank you.
Is there anyone else who wishes to address the council? Please state your name and the city in which you live.
Good evening, Mayor, city council members, city manager. My name is Nadia Curtis, I live in South Des Moines, I've lived there for 34 years. Before it became the city of Des Moines, I was considered unincorporated King County, city of Kent, and finey Des Moines. So in 34 years, I have seen the good, the bad, and the ugly. At this point, because I have seen so much and attended council meeting, this is the best time for Des Moines, thanks to the city manager, current city manager, and the council members. This is a good time for Des Moines. Granted, we do have problems, but if the citizens will just look around, read what's happening in federal way, read what is happening in the city of Sea-Tac, go further into Burien, you will see, this is the best time for Des Moines, and I for one am happy to be living here at this present time, and it's thanks to you guys, thanks to the city chief, thanks to the police chief, thanks to Public Works, which before I wanted to mention what a wonderful job they did doing snowgeddon. So it's all these various departments that is making the city of Des Moines the best place to be in the South End. Thank you.
Thank you very much. Is there anyone else who wishes to address the council? Okay, seeing no one approach, that will take us forward to our public hearing. Let's see, can I pass this down?
Yeah.
So we have a public hearing over our Shoreline Master Program Periodic Review and Amendment. We have a staff presentation by our land use planner, Jason Waiki, and I will now open the public hearing. Please give your presentation.
Good evening, Mayor, council, visitors. Welcome to this public hearing, local and state public hearing regarding the Shoreline Master Program Periodic Review. My name is Jason Waiki, land use planner with the city of Des Moines. Tonight, we also have Misty Blair with the Washington Department of Ecology, also Wayne Carlson of AHBL. AHBL have been our consultants, working on this project with us. They've been primarily focused on public outreach and public participation on this Thank you two for being here. Okay, so what's the purpose of this public hearing? The public hearing tonight is partly to brief council, partly to brief the public on the proposed SMP amendments. Now, we have the proposed SMP up on our website, www.de moyne wa.gov/smp, and I encourage you to take a look at the proposed amendments. This public hearing is also a requirement of, by state, by state law. It's an opportunity as well for the public to comment tonight. We're beginning the final week of comment period, ending on April 18th. Today, staff will consider comments received, and we will prepare a response to ecology, for ecology, and submit that as part of our submittal package. So a little background on the SMP and periodic review. It's an important document. The city of Des Moines is a coastal city, we've got approximately six miles of shorelines. This document will partly help shape areas such as Redondo, the marina, neighborhoods along our bluffs. Any projects within the shorelines, we'll look at this document, the Shoreline Master Program, and I'm gonna use SMP for short. We'll look for this, at this document, for guidance as well as regulations. So our current SMP was adopted in 2011. Washington State requires cities to update, review, and potentially update their Shoreline Master Programs every eight years. And this summer is Des Moines' deadline, actually, June 30th. So what is the purpose of this periodic review? Well, it's a review, and potentially in this amendment, an amendment of that SMP. And it's to ensure that the SMP complies with items that may have changed since 2011. Things change, such as state laws, city regulations, city policies. It's also an opportunity to clean up the document, and city staff has attempted to do that. We've tried to make it an easier document to use for both staff as well as the public, applicants and such. So the Department of Ecology has been working with the city throughout this process, they've been a fantastic partner. Misty Blair has been a tremendous resource, she's been very generous with her assistance, thank you. Ecology has provided 25,000 in grant funds to help offset the city's work on this project. Now Ecology makes the final decision, the final informal decision of approval, and that, that decision is dependent on whether or not the Shoreline Master Program is consistent with the Shoreline Management Act, the Greater Act. It's also important that it fosters smart and coordinated development of the state shorelines. Procedural requirements, requirements must be fulfilled. And the essential goal of no net loss within the shoreline, so preserving our shorelines, the ecological functions is a very important part of this, and I think we can all agree that this is something that we'll agree on. So, the city has worked to engage the public throughout this process. We've worked with AHBL, as I mentioned. We've worked to get the public to participate and to provide outreach. We've put up a city webpage, www.de moyne We've put up a city webpage, www.demoinewa.gov/smp again. This is where you'll find background and information about the process. You'll find an online comment form where the public can submit comments. You'll receive updates on this webpage, all the documentation regarding the Shoreline Master Programs up there. We've held a number of open houses. We've briefed council a number of times. We've provided local news outlets with updates. We've provided face, or we've put posts up on our Facebook page. And this public hearing tonight is an opportunity for the public to participate if they so wish. All right, so I'll run down some of the proposed amendments, just kind of summarize them. So one of the changes is to be consistent with state laws and rules that have changed since 2011. For instance, the shoreline exemption cost threshold has gone up to $7,000. So we've changed, updated the SMP to be consistent with that. Changes to provide clarification and flexibility in permitting. And one of those items is permitting procedures. We've kind of streamlined some of the permitting procedures and simplified them. We've changed the permitted uses to allow for light commercial uses such as kayak rentals and, and potentially small concession stands within the beach park area, for example. This is in order to provide amenities for the public and maybe create an active vibrant park area. We've also incorporated environmentally critical area regulations as well as the city's non-conforming regulations into this document that has jurisdiction. And this was directed by, by Ecology. Okay, so what's the timeline for the rest of this process? So the public comment period ends on April 18th. That's one week away. Commerce has 60 days to review the proposal. So the city sends the initial submittal with a response to comments tonight and throughout the public comment period with our submittal package to Ecology. Ecology will then have 30 days after that to provide an initial determination of consistency. At that point, council would be asked to adopt the amended SMP. And we have a target date of June 27th for that. Once again, Ecology must formally approve or look at the, and review the SMP and formally approve the SMP to, for it to go into effect. So that's it. The public comment period ends on April 18th of this coming right up. Comments may be submitted by mail, email, or through the city's online comment form that I mentioned before. Input is encouraged. You may comment tonight if you wish. I'll leave you with the motion to pass the draft ordinance to a second reading on June 27th or soon thereafter. That's it. Thanks.
Okay, at this time, it's time for public comment around the issue of this public hearing. Has anyone signed up? No one has signed up to speak. Okay, well, is there any one who didn't sign up who wishes to address this issue? Second call. Is there anyone who didn't sign up who wishes to speak? Third and final call. Is there anyone who didn't sign up who wishes to speak? Okay. State your name and the city in which you live. You'll have three minutes, please.
My name is J.C. Harris. I live in Des Moines. Even though this is not, I have not taken the time to prepare specific items, but the, the Bay, Poverty Bay and down as far as Three Tree Point and further south have always been ecologically treated with less respect by the Department of Ecology than other areas in Puget Sound. The shellfish, the fish, fishing is noticeably poorer. The monitoring of sea life has not been taken as seriously. And so I would just like Ecology to take that into account when approving this change. And I would like the city, to the extent that it is possible, to take extra care in changing any ordinances that would have, could possibly weaken any of the sea life around Des Moines. The things are hanging by a thread in the area and I just really am very concerned about, you know, I know you want to have a dive, you want to have diving and all of that, and it's going to be real tough to have any kind of recreational diving if there isn't any sea life around to look at. Thank you.
Is there anyone else who wishes to speak on this issue? Second call. Is there anyone else who wishes to address the council on this issue? Third and final call. Is there anyone else who didn't sign up who wishes to speak? Okay, at this time, I am moving to council. Council, this is, this is for questions only. Okay, I see, before I, you go, I see council member back. Is there anyone else? Okay, council member back, you're recognized.
Just one question for staff. So the six miles of shoreline that we manage, does that include the waterfront in front of Saltwater State Park or is that a separate jurisdiction that has to do their own shoreline management?
That does include that area as well.
Okay.
Deputy Mayor Pennington.
Could you explain to what degree that the Department of Ecology has, has jurisdiction over the fishing and the harvesting of gooey ducks and clams and, and all of that type of stuff?
We have Misty Blair here. Maybe she could probably answer that better than I could.
Can you stand up there?
Yes, please.
Could we close the public hearing?
No, we did not close the public hearing. This is our council questions in the middle of the public hearing.
Okay, so that's a little bit unorthodox for the public hearing process, but that we debate during it?
It's not a debate. It's the council, it's, this is simply the council question.
Okay.
Period, and there, there's not a debate.
Okay. So your question, I'm sorry, was?
So to what degree do you have jurisdiction over, over the, the fishing and the harvesting of gooey ducks and clams and the overall health and welfare of the sea life that resides on that part of the Puget Sound?
Big question. So in the same way that the city has jurisdiction over things like aquaculture, that's part of the master program. It's a use that's regulated. There's other things like native harvest that's not regulated as a use and that's regulated by the Washington State Department of Fish and Wildlife as a type of, gaming is not the right word, but it's a, it's part of their licensing for, like you would get for hunting. So it depends on what, if the use is a, is an actual business type of a commercial use where someone is planting and then harvesting a shellfish of some kind, that's a use that's regulated by your master program and every master program in the state. And then if it's, if it's like a natural harvest, then it's not. And that's excluded from the definition of aquaculture. On the, the bigger picture of different monitoring programs, so we have, I work in the Shorelands Division of Ecology specifically with master programs and implementation of the Shoreline Management Act. We have other departments that work with water quality and some of them do do monitoring. We also have some research stations that do monitoring of different things. I don't know offhand whether or not any of that monitoring occurs within the city of Des Moines. And most of that is related to the water quality, not necessarily looking directly at what kind of marine life we're seeing in, in which areas. I don't know if that answers your question.
Yeah, that's, that answers. Thanks.
Okay.
Next hand I saw was council member Bangs, and then I'll go to council member Buxton.
That was going to be my question about water quality, and you're saying it's not necessarily in your area of responsibility, correct? Can you find out whose area it is and one, is it being monitored and two, what is the health of our six miles?
So I don't know specifically about the
Right.
The six miles and, and I, I would caveat that and it's, that's a hard thing to break up, right? We're talking about, when you talk about water bodies, they don't stop at jurisdictional lines. And so usually when you see studies that are done, it's on a, on a larger scale and hard to break up into municipal boundaries, even county boundaries. It's usually done by watershed. And so there, there are different groups out there and Ecology funds a lot of that sort of pass-through funding, but as far as I know, we don't directly monitor municipal water sources. You guys also have your MPDS permit, which is through Ecology, and that's how you manage your stormwater, which is supposed to get to how the upland impacts are, how, how to decrease the upland impacts on the outfalls in marine waters.
But we do have a resource that we can call to find out.
I, I can look into it for you guys if you want me to, to see if there's anything directly out there, but as far as I know, there's, there's nothing. Usually, usually jurisdiction-specific type of activities are done through the, someone coming up with a plan and then requesting a grant to do that kind of studies. There are a couple, Sea Grants has some programs that, that funds and research projects and I, I'm not aware of any of those that are in Des Moines.
Thank you.
So council, just as a reminder, these are questions for points of clarification. Council member Buxton.
So for clarification to anybody, how many feet does the Shoreline Master Program go out into the water? That might help.
Yeah.
That, there's a
Right. I know that it goes 200 feet inland.
Mm-hmm.
I believe it's 200 feet out as well. No, I'm sorry.
It depends on the, your jurisdictional line and so
Please come to the podium. I'm sorry, we have to get this on record.
It's going to depend on your jurisdictional line in the water. So usually it's the outer harbor line and, and that's because the, these regulations are tied to your guys' municipal area. And so wherever that ends in the waterway is where your authority to issue permits would end. And then it becomes DNRs.
There is a motion on the screen and I will ask for the motion, and I, I want to point out that we are not closing the public hearing at this time. We're asking the council just to move it to a second reading on June 27th. I see council member back.
I move that we pass draft ordinance number 19-010 to a second reading on June 27, 2019, or as soon thereafter as the matter may be heard.
Second.
Okay, I think I heard council member Bangs first with an energetic second second by deputy mayor Pennington.
I guess because of the nature of the public comment period, they're asking that we close the hearing tonight. So
I can explain the reasoning behind that.
Yeah.
Please.
So the city has elected to use a joint review process for this adoption, which involves this being a joint comment period and a, that has, we've all noticed the start, the end, the beginning and the end of the comment period with the hearing being in the middle of it. At the close of that, city staff is going to put together an initial submittal that includes everything that has occurred during this timeframe, showing that they met all the public participation requirements and give me the draft that comes out of this. And then Ecology creates what's called an initial determination so that, the purpose of it is that when you guys have the, the final version in front of you and you're ready to make a decision, you know where Ecology stands on your decision, on your current document. So there's no surprises after the final submittal comes. And if there were any issues, we would bring those up to you at that time. If the public hearing were to remain open right now, then public comments would still be, being accepted. And then I wouldn't be able to, to move forward to the initial submittal and write that initial determination. And, and we would have to renotice to all the folks that we told that comments have to be in by the 18th. We'd have to renotice to them to whatever date the next meeting is that you're still accepting comments through. So just something to keep in mind. If, if we're ready to move this draft forward, then we need to close the, the hearing tonight. And if not, then we have to look at re, renoticing.
That's correct. It's kind of a unique situation because there's this dual state and city jurisdiction right now. So it, tonight's hearing was noticed, the public was given an opportunity to comment. We received those comments, so it's proper that we can close the hearing tonight, move it to a second reading.
So all I do is close this public hearing?
Yes, and then, and then we make the motion.
Really quick?
Yes.
So in the information there, I thought at least we gave them the ability to submit till the 18th.
Right.
And we're closing the hearing before the 18th? Can we?
Comments can still be submitted.
Submitted.
Yes.
They're just
It's just for the matter of the council, the public hearing, this piece of it is closed after a minute from now or so.
I will now close the public hearing.
Okay.
And then the motion.
Yeah, well, the motion needs to be modified.
No, that motion would still be correct. The hearing is closed, the
Oh, but the motion is still correct?
Yes.
Okay. So the motion still stands. Any further discussion? Okay, all those in favor, please raise your right hand, say aye.
Aye.
Okay, at this point, we will now go to our board and committee reports and council member comments, and tonight we will start with council member Mahoney.
Thank you, Mayor. First of all, I'd like to say that I think your statement was an excellent one and I held back my comments because I wanted to incorporate comments with the consent agenda that's on, on today's agenda. The way I can best describe it is this, is if you look at item four, it's a Des Moines interlocal agreement with Sea-Tac and it happens to be the intersection of 200th and Des Moines Memorial Drive, right? Brilliant leadership and direction and creativity in this regard also includes, on 200th, we have, if you've ever been up there in a rainstorm, it becomes a puddle, almost a lake in its own right, right? Well, through the genius leadership and creativity of our, of Dan Brewer and his team in conjunction with Michael, they've basically found a way to add an extra $161,000 there in that project to include that and save a bunch of money. And possibly here, right at that point, we're going to save about $350,000. Now, I'm talking about one agenda that we see every week, right?
While you're on that topic, I'd like to add one more point. The absence of a well-functioning drain at that point that they found a way to fix has been present. I've lived in the city all but a few years of my life and I know that deputy mayor Pennington has as well. I think it's always flooded on a heavy rainstorm there. So I, I'm going to tell you, okay, we'll play the card. It's been at least 40 years that that problem has existed.
So here it is, using creative resources to get the damn problem fixed and save $350,000 probably in its cost. Item seven, this is the inter-funded loan on Van Gasken property. By moving money around that we already have because we have reserves and we have By moving money around that we already have, because we have reserves, and we have all this because we've been so fiscally responsible, we're saving $89,000 of our taxpayers' money in interest. My God, all right? If anybody had a calculator, you should be keeping track right now. Item eight, updated the administrative provision of the Business and Occupational Tax Code. We all know that the zip code that we have gets shared by Seattle, and they have, we know, we, we're, we're, nobody knows exactly how much money has gone to Seattle that should have come to us. Here's a resource that's never been done, that we're employing and putting somebody, putting an agency out there to get this money. We don't, we can't even put a value to that. But, you know, right there, let's just say, we may be getting hundreds of thousands of dollars back, or in the future, getting it when somebody else would have got it. This is the finance group working with Michael and his leadership team. Item nine, the Barnes Creek Grant, okay? Here's a trail that's going to be completed through the creativity of a couple individuals that speak to us at the Transportation Committee. They're getting $300,000. Now, I'm not even touching on things like 216th, where virtually a $7 million project gets funded by outside sources, so we don't have to pay for it. It's simply genius. These are the kinds of things that happen every day in our meetings when we research this, and people are worried about $15,000. Now, I held my comments back, because I wanted to include them here. The other comment I'm going to make, because I'm very protective of the community, right, is social media, right? Stories get out there with half truths and half facts. And some of the individuals have been known to create fake profiles to emphasize or create division. And anytime anybody creates division in our community, I get upset, right? I'm a veteran. I'm not going to, I don't, I don't run from a fight, I go to it. And I'm upset about this piece of it. But, I'm not stupid enough to walk into an ambush in social media, right? But if anybody wants to talk to me about this, then I'll talk to them. I'll tell them my answers and why I made the decisions. What this problem is, is they mislead people in our community who don't read the currents, or the website, or other places, and it's a problem. But to take advantage of them is ruthless and cruel, and not what we need in this city. And I will stand against anybody that does that. You know, some people, when the, and I'm hoping some people are listening now, because most of the people have left this building. But when you look at somebody in social media, research them, check them out, you just might find one thing. They might be a Seattle City Councilmember in sheep's clothing. Thank you.
Councilmember Back.
So, last night, I attended the Des Moines Marina Association Annual Meeting, and I appreciate Scott giving the update on the dredging project and the upcoming replacement of our bulkhead. That was good information. Transportation, I will mention that I just heard, Sound Transit announced today that they just received a $790 million federal grant to help with their Federal Way Link Extension from Angle Lake to Federal Way, which is supposed to open 2024. Thought I'd mentioned that. And the only other item on the consent agenda I'll comment on now is item nine. The extension of the Barnes Creek Trail Project that we're using the TIB benefit to get that done. That is going to be a huge, huge blessing for this city. And that's part of the greater picture of connecting Highline College with the Barnes Creek Trail, which connects to the Des Moines Creek Trail, which ultimately connects with other trail systems that can get us all the way to Lake Washington. So, this is a big piece of the puzzle. So I'm glad to see that that is getting approved tonight. And that's my remarks. Thank you.
Well, and I'd like to add, Councilmember Back, your support with the Boy Scouts and helping to get a portion of this done has been exemplary, and I want to thank you for that.
Thank the Scouts, because they had the BlackBerry scars to show it. They, yeah, the Scouts did a huge four-block part of the project in an environmentally sensitive area between 216th and 220th. And it was all man, manual labor, they couldn't get any machines in there, so
They got their fathers in there, though.
But, yeah. The fathers, the fathers seemed to be more bloody than the sons, but it was cool. And all the kids had to keep their cellphones in the car, and it was a time to work. But they, they went out on about six different outings, but that was a fun, that was a fun project to kind of volunteer and help coordinate. So, thanks for mentioning that. That's all I've got.
Councilmember Bangs.
Several of us actually attended the Marina Annual Meeting last night, so, thank you, Scott. Also, there, I attended the Arts Commission, Des Moines Arts Commission Meeting, and I'm not going to steal their thunder, they're coming to give a quarterly report. So, there's a lot of great things happening there. Attended the Midway Park Garden Project late in the evening, or afternoon, but I know our fellow councilmembers, Buxton and Mahoney, I'm not sure. And then, of course, our city manager, Michael Mathias, was there, of which he attends many, many community meetings, by the way. The other thing I wanted to mention was, we've got a number of things on our community, you know, agenda, and one of them coming up is the Earth Day Cleanup, which is also the extravaganza.
Egg extravaganza.
Eggs, sorry, egg extravaganza. So, that's on April 20th. My assumption is, one's 9 to 12, the other one's 9 to 10, so maybe an hour with one and two with the other. But Earth Day is going to be extremely important. And then again, as you heard this evening, as many people as possible attend the Town Hall hosted by the League of Quiet Skies voters. I know several of us will be there, if not all of us. And that concludes my report.
Thank you. Councilmember Buxton.
Thank you, Mayor. I think there are also some other events at Saltwater Park in the afternoon on that extravaganza day, if I'm not, yes. So, so you can hit Park Run, get some eggs at the beach park, then head over, stop at the Quarter Deck for coffee, and then head over to Saltwater State Park, and volunteer somewhere in the community picking up garbage. So, anyway, you might have noticed some of the pages on the chairs, I kind of did that myself, just in honor, to honor and make, it's Sexual Assault Awareness Month, and there are some upcoming events that you can participate in, just to create community awareness of things that are going on. So I thought I would provide those. I want to keep it a little short. I attended on April 4th a Growth Management Policy Board, Vision 2050, which was brought up tonight. We took input from cities and leadership around the region with regard to elements of several chapters of 2050, including transportation, regional growth strategy, and development patterns. And even though, even though the comment period for the supplemental environmental impact statement, which we talked about tonight, that's going to end on April 29th, there's still going to be time for cities and agencies to continue to offer input through the Growth Management Policy Board until midsummer. So, that's another opportunity. We had a birthday this weekend, I think. Happy birthday.
Oh.
Yeah. Happy birthday, Vic. Yeah. And last night, I attended the Public Issues Committee Meeting, and there was a robust discussion with regard to the Iman Initiative coming up, 976. And whether Sound Cities Association felt it was appropriate to take a stance, and the conversation was so robust, that no decision was made as of yet. So, and a decision was made, however, to stand behind a set of affordable housing considerations that have been drafted by an organization called Challenge Seattle. It's a Chris Gregwar/Microsoft venture that hopes to invigorate the affordable housing market. So if any of you have, there's more to that story, but I'm, if you have any more questions, let me know later. Today, the Human Services Advisory Committee met, and it was a great, it was so cool. We, the Human Services Advisory Committee works to fund several agencies in the region that serve Des Moines citizens. One of those agencies is the Poison Control Center, and they came and gave us this really great presentation today with recorded phone calls of people that call in, kind of like when you hear a 911 call, but these are people calling Poison Control, and how they respond, and how they work, how they deal with people. And it was a really great, it was a really great experience to hear that. Just for some stats, for Des Moines alone, they received 67 calls last year. And of those calls, they were able to work that, so 92% of those people stayed at home versus the average statistic of 60% would have normally gone to get services, like in an emergency room, for example. So, with the average price of a trip like that, it saved our community plus minus $45,000 to have that agency serving our community. So, they're, and they're staffed with certified, board-certified toxicologists, all their staff have poison, they're all poison info specialists. Great, great agency that we support, one of the agencies that we support. So, that's all that I have for tonight. Thank you.
The only thing I have to say, Councilmember Buxton, is the, that number, if, how many people didn't go, have to go to the emergency room?
So, they, oh, my, it's about, so, so, they said that normally about 60% of those people would have visited an emergency room or used services, like an aid car, called an aid car. And so then they, they say, but instead, only about 8% of them who ended up calling, ended up using services, like an aid car or, so they, what they figured is an average expense per service usage of about $1,200.
Yeah, okay, and that brings me to my point. There were, the burden to a family, and it's an emergency, granted, but the burden to a family, if you go to the emergency room?
Yes.
Is never 1,200 bucks. It's always way more than that. I appreciate the $45,000 number, but I think it is grossly underestimated, because when you look at the overall impact, you have South King Fire Rescue coming out, I don't know what it costs for dispatch, but I'm sure the gentleman down at the end of the dais does. And then on top of that, the transport, just the trans, if you call an ambulance, and I unfortunately know this because of other situations, you call an ambulance, just one way is going to, to Burien is going to cost you $975.
Yeah, it takes them out of service.
And you look at the burden to the family, because not all families, I mean, we have this organization that's helping us, not all families can necessarily have the insurance or can afford to pay. So you look at the multiplier effect, I, I'll bet you that number is five times as much, maybe more. That's, that's an incredible
Yeah.
report. Thank you very much.
Yeah, absolutely.
May I make a comment?
Yes, please.
So, I think, you know, one thing about Human Services that's interesting, and the Council, by taking the leadership to write the city's finances, we've been in a position, year over year, to increase the contribution to the Human Services function. And we anticipate being able to do that again, and we've been moving upward in the neighborhood of $25,000 a year. So this year, we anticipate what we'd recommend to Council will be $150,000 to provide more of exactly the types of services Councilmember Buxton is referring to. And that's, that's one of the most exciting things about getting all this right.
Well, what I appreciate about that is that when I was first elected to Council, the conversation was always, how do they, how do they move that bar down? And I know it was down, I'm going to look to some of the staff, but it got down around 80 or less. And when I look at that, you know, it gives me nothing but pride to say that we've almost doubled from where we were bottoming out. And that's just, that was one of the things that we all wanted to accomplish, and we absolutely did. Taking your thunder here, Deputy Mayor Pennington, please go.
Because we can be here till 10:00. Anyway, I attended a
We can move to extend. And then we can move to extend.
Yeah, we can do that, too. Be here till midnight. Anyway, I attended a public safety meeting this evening, and I won't repeat it, because you heard it from the chief, and that was the briefing that we had gotten. Earlier in the week, I attended a meeting with, there was Police, Fire, Wesley Homes, Emergency Management. We have a really unique opportunity to the building across the street at Wesley Gardens. The main building's coming down sometime next year, and we have about a two-to-three month window that all of our emergency services and emergency management and CERT teams, and you name it, will be able to come together and utilize that building. You know, there'll be, probably, there's a committee together that's going to plan some timelines and some training events. And so it's, and it's also an opportunity to really be an educational event for our citizens. So, more to come on that. And that's, those are unique opportunities that don't really come along once every 50 or 60 or 70 years, however old the building is. The other thing is, don't forget, June 1st, the Farmer's Market is opening. You can get a sponsor form from, on their, online, and you can support the market, whether it be, you know, financially, or whether it be going down and volunteering. You know, there's a lot of ways to support the market. It's really a great, great thing that happens in our community. It's well-renowned, so please support the market. And that's really it for me.
Okay, wait, I've got two comments that, I'm going to go to the city manager and then to Councilmember Bangs.
Yeah. Deputy Mayor, appreciate you mentioning the market. One of the things that we are working on and will have in place is shuttle service on Saturdays to the Farmer's Market, especially to provide access for our seniors from Wesley and elsewhere, but we'll provide Saturday shuttle service to market starting June 1st. And we'll go to midday service on the route that we currently have to Angle Lake, the downtown of Marina in September.
Great, well, thank you. And before I forget, I would be remiss if I didn't thank Wesley Homes for the donation of that building for our, to our community to use for training. So, anyway, thanks.
And I think we had Councilmember Bangs.
I wanted to ask Councilmember Buxton, maybe I heard it wrong, did you say 946, Tim Iman?
Nah, 976.
Oh, you said 97, okay.
I think it's 976, the Iman Initiative.
Okay.
It's, it has to do with it. Yeah, CAR-TAD.
I think it's 947. I looked up 9, I could be wrong. I looked up 976, and it was totally
Okay, and
Different. I just want to make sure.
Thank you.
Our crack team of researchers is
Our crack team's looking it up.
It's like 947.
It is 94, okay, thank, I just wanted to make sure.
Thank you for the point of clarification. Deputy Mayor Pennington, I'm sorry, it got a little where your remarks concluded.
Yeah, oh, yeah, I'm done.
You're good.
Thank you very much for the time.
And by the way, again, happy belated birthday. You're wearing 30 really well.
Well, thank you.
Please.
Just real quickly, did you mention the MERT that Dan Brewer brought up during our?
No, I did not.
Okay.
Do you want me to mention?
Would, I think, I think it's exciting.
Yeah, it is pretty cool. So what we're talking about is a MERT, it's a Marine Emergency Response Team. And what that actually is, is our, Dan Brewer and the, I don't know who all met, I think, Scott from Marina, and they met with some folks from Vashon Island. And Vashon has this emergency response, it's a marine team as opposed to a CERT. And, and they, they're a group of boaters on the island that will evacuate the island, or they will, they will bring supplies from the mainland to the island. It's kind of a unique thing. I had not heard of that. And so it's a pretty cool thing. So they're actually going to, going to meet some more with the folks on Vashon and see how we can, we can partner in that. They were, you know, good thing with networking, they're at a meeting, and Vashon, the folks from Vashon came up, said, hey, you know, nice to meet you, oh, by the way, we have this program, and if something happens on the island, we're evacuating our people to the Marina. Great, nice to know that. So anyway, out of that conversation came a much more conversation that really could probably be beneficial to both, both us and the island. Thanks.
Did you have a question?
Vic, can you explain more? What are they doing at the, you said we're going to do something at the Wesley Building before demo?
Yeah, so
Some kind of emergency training?
We'll have the opportunity to use that building for about a two-to-three month window, and what we'll, we will have lots of different types of training, whether it be for police, the SWAT teams, whether it be for Wesley Homes, or perhaps Judson Park, in evacuating multi-story buildings, and people in, you know, the residents, not using the residents, but, but, you know, how to evacuate folks. Fire will be involved. Fire will be involved with, with some things there. So, there's a whole host of, of different things. Our CERT program, we'll have an opportunity to go over there and, and work in, in a, in a real environment and to understand what that means. So, there'll be a, a, probably a host of different types of things that could happen over there. And again, I, I joked, but it, it really is a unique opportunity. That size of a building and, and, and that type of shape is, is really, doesn't come along very often. So, and we're very fortunate that, that we have a, you know, a large window of time. Usually, it's about a week or two weeks you get a, just a quick time to do this. So, this is, Wesley has just been, you know, really generous in, in building into the, their timeline, this amount of time for, for community resources to, to assemble and, and do some real good, you know, meaningful training.
I remember when there was that house by the Masonic Home, and you guys were given permission to burn the thing down and actually have a live fire drill, so.
Yeah, we burnt the house down where the nuns lived at St. Phil's, too, so, you know. I don't know where that's going to end.
But we're not burning down the big Wesley.
But we're not burning that one down.
Okay, okay.
Yeah. Oh, anyway. Yeah, these opportunities are pretty, pretty unique and, and really, really actually beneficial to, to the emergency service world.
And I'm happy to regain control of this meeting. Oh, man. From the standpoint of my report, I attended the Mayor's Roundtable with City Manager Mathias. Again, we continue to work together from a multi-city perspective on a number of issues. One of the things that will come forward is a letter from the city to graduates of Mount Rainier, letting them know that we are proud of them and appreciate everything it took to get there, and encourage them to go forward in whatever field that they are motivated to do, whether that is college, a trade, or something else. So, we are working with the school district. The, out of respect for privacy, there's a bit of a complication. So, we will draft a letter. It will come out on City Letterhead, get sent to the district for putting the graduate's name from Mount Rainier on it and address and so forth. We will not possess any of that confidential information. So, that was one of the things that was a bit of a, a challenge from the past. We would like to expand it to eighth graders going into ninth grade, to encourage them to stay in school and stay the course and let them know it really matters. So, that's, that's, that was really a successful discussion. There's also Mayor Mata from Burien is very concerned about the volume of gang activity he has, and he's, and it was, I was very pleased as we sat around the table. He said, you know what? I'm not going to say you guys don't have anybody in Des Moines, but I don't hear about you a lot. I hear about these gangs here and there and C-TAC and there, and anyway, it, but what we pointed out is, if you have a problem, we have a problem, because you're our neighbor. And this is where I am really proud of our chief and the, and our agency and the work that we're doing to, they were all very aware of the fact that the, we had apprehended the person from the Thanksgiving Day violence and that we had successfully, our team had broken in partnership, other cases. And so, there, they are requesting a further conversation where we actually bring our chief with us. That has not been scheduled yet, but that's it. Of course, the Marina Association, like everybody else, Scott Fan here, you nailed it. You, he was very comfortable. He spoke in front of a large group, which we all know is not his favorite thing to do, but you wouldn't know it by the way he presented last night. He, he's getting good at it, and that says that, you know, Michael, we invested in the right guy. And then, again, I want to thank Quiet Skies and the Quiet Skies voters for putting on this event, and I'm hoping that my colleagues will be attending as many of it. You know, sometimes dates don't work, I get it. The fact that Michael and I were able to look at the agenda to see that things were not pressing for that night, and it was, there was not a lot that had come forward that we thought would be there anyway, and that's why the decision was made to be able to shift that forward. It's unfortunate when those scheduling issues occur, and we may not have been able to work around it, but in this case, we absolutely were, and I'm happy to go out and show support. The, the thing about it is, these folks are making a difference because it's not just the government entity speaking to another government entity, it's the people who elect the government entity that are getting out there. That's why it matters. That's why it mattered when they talked about school zoning here. It's, it's the people that have to go out and say, I, you know, because the truth of the matter is, there's seven of us here, but we're a body of one. And that's how we have to speak and go forward. Every voice out there that's, that hits their podium that addresses them, that's a voter. And it's a different dynamic, and, and it matters. And then the last thing, so, at our retreat, one of the topics, we talked about some process changes, and, and we're working on that, but one of the topics that came up, that had, it was the outcome of the 216th neighborhood impacts and so forth. There was a lot of discussion about, you know, should we look at some ordinance, protection ordinance, or, you know, to help with those mature neighborhoods and so forth. And it didn't really seem to fit the, a proposal. I guess my thought is that if there is enough council support, I would like to remand that to ECON for vetting and bringing back to the body. So, I, I will make the motion that we remand the issue around large developments coming in next to neighborhoods and, you know, possible considerations, whether it be in the form of an ordinance or zoning or something that triggers something, but we have to vet it, because I think it was well-stated. We have to figure out what problem we're trying to solve, but we all perceive something potentially here, as did many of the people in those neighborhoods. So, I would like to make the motion that we remand that topic to committee for revamping and discussion.
Second.
Okay, I have a second. Is there any further discussion?
Yeah, yeah.
Please.
I think one of the things that we talked about was, in remanding it for consideration, the committee will also need to look at what the current existing work plan is.
Correct.
And determine where this will substitute in for something else.
And communicate it back to the body. That is correct.
Okay, thank you.
No other question? Okay, all those in favor, please raise your right hand and say aye.
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 Am I counting 6-0, I believe? Okay, I'll just say, any opposed? Okay, I got 6-0, I didn't see it. Okay, thank you on that. And at this time, I will ask the clerk to please read our consent calendar.
Item one, approval of vouchers. Item two, approval of minutes. Item three will be moved to the May 9th agenda. Item four, Des Moines Memorial Drive Interlocal Agreement with C-TAC, 200th Streets Intersection. Item five, Music for Life Proclamation. Item six, Lodging Tax Advisory Committee Appointment. Item seven, Interfund Loan of $125,000 for the purchase of the Van Gaskin property. Item eight, Draft Ordinance 19-035, Updating the Administrative Provisions of the Business and Occupation Tax Code. And item nine, TIB Complete Streets Grant Award, Barnes Creek Trail, Zenith Elementary School Extension. And that completes the consent calendar, Mayor.
Is there a motion to approve?
So moved.
Second.
Wow, I saw a lot of green lights, but they weren't the ones I saw. So, I believe you had, you had the motion. Well, I'm saying the other, I mean, and, yeah. Deputy Mayor Pennington approved. Phew. It's always nice when you guys are passionate about a subject, because there's, there's usually multiple motions and multiple seconds, so that makes it a little bit of a challenge on my end. Thank you for your patience. Is there any item, as read into the record, that any council member wishes to remove? Okay. Is there any discussion, other than what's been had?
I think I discussed it enough.
Okay, well, I.
Five more minutes, please.
Okay. Seeing none, all those in favor, please raise your right hand and say aye.
Aye.
Then, agenda passes as read 6-0. Okay. I'll now read the Music for Life Proclamation summary into the record. The Des Moines City Council hereby proclaims May as the Music for Life Month. Okay, that puts us at the end of our meeting. Our next meeting will be at the Highline School District, with the Highline School District Board members, at their location of ERAC in Burien on Wednesday, April 17th, from 5:00 to 6:00 p.m. Is there a motion to adjourn?
Moved.
Second.
Motion was made by Deputy Mayor Pennington, seconded by Councilmember Banks. Discussion? All those in favor, please raise your right hand, say aye.
Aye.
We are adjourned.